Good evening. The first order of business tonight is the swearing in of all of the newly elected people of the Town Council and the Board of Education. So I'm going to call Lisa Valenti up, our Town Clerk, to do the swearing in.
Okay, may I have the newly elected mayor to come in front? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as the mayor for the town of North Bramford to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as deputy mayor for the town of North Bramford to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Okay, may I have the rest of the Town Council members come in front, please? All together? Do you solemnly swear you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as members of the Town Council and Water Pollution Control Authority to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Yeah. I was very late.
And may I have the newly elected members of the Board of Education, please step forward in front?
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Board of Education to the best of your ability, so help you God?
So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting.
This group gets to see our party.
Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting.
This group gets to see our party.
Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting.
This group gets to see our party.
Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting.
This group gets to see our party.
Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would like to take pictures, we can do that now, too. So we're going to take a few little breaks before we start the meeting. Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So before we continue on with the meeting, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute intermission here. There's some food in the back and water as a little reception area, and if anyone would[680.14]
Just this here, where you're using that?
Yeah.
$2.50 per week with an additional $25 an hour after the first two hours. I like that to turn it.
It's per meeting, not per week.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was like week, I'm sorry.
Well, she would be very happy.
All right, so as stipulated.
Second. Okay, motion by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Diamond. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay, motion carries nine zero. Now we'll have the appointment of the town attorney. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to appoint the appointment of the town attorney, Brian Leclerc.
Do we appoint you specifically or the firm?
I always say my name with the firm because you're chartered.
Okay.
This is an individual, so Brian Leclerc Bertram Moses, PC. So amended as such, Brian Leclerc Bertram Moses.
Second. Okay, motion made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries nine nothing. Okay, next item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. First one is the October 10th, 2023 ARPA workshop. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries eight zero one abstention. The next minutes of the October 17th, 2023 regular town council meeting. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Abstain. I abstain as well.
Okay. Motion carries seven zero two abstentions. And the last one is minutes of the November 6th, 2023 special Zoom meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries seven zero two abstentions. Now on to the water pollution control authority. Citizen's statements. Having none unfinished business? None? New business? None. Citizen's statements regarding water pollution control? None. We will now move on to the regular council meeting. Reports of commissions, boards and commissions. First one is economic development.
Economic development met on 11/6. I have the minutes. Not a whole lot, except that they've been meeting with planning and zoning to work on some things there. They spoke with Bob Noack, the chair there. And we have a couple ribbon cuttings coming up. Central Cafe on 1116 at 4:00 PM. It's over on the Central Plaza on the North Branford side of town, tucked in the corner there. A new neighborhood bar that opened up, supposed to be pretty good from what I've seen online. Dunkin' in Northford, now that they've remodeled that, 11:30 at 11:00 AM. And Kiki's To Go is committed, but they need to pick a date and set that up.
Okay. Next is Park and Recreation. So the September report from Park and Rec. They served 200 meals in their program. Their after-school camp on Monday and Wednesdays. They have, for the month of September, they had 19 students signed up. They had 30 grocery shopping trips. Medical transports, 21. Senior programs, 10. They had, they sponsored a Coffee with a Cop program. They had this senior center hoedown, trunk or treat, the haunted cinema. They had a very busy October, the pumpkin patch party. They did the Veterans Day Operation Care Kit. They had a Halloween party for the senior center. And they also had the Great Goblin giveaway. So they've been quite busy. And that concludes Park and Rec. Next is Police Commission.
The Police Commission met yesterday. It was quite a jam-packed agenda. I'll just highlight a few things. Deputy Chief Lovelace talked about the fact that the department's participating in a number of fundraisers such as No Shave November to help families with children dealing with cancer. I think that's wonderful that they get involved in so many activities. He also discussed the receipt of the COPS grant, which we'll be talking about tonight. And I think it's interesting that they had 75 applicants for the upcoming couple positions. I think that's a tribute to this town that they have that many applicants. The new building, the stonework is going on soon. The Butler Building Foundation is being poured and interior work is beginning. So that's great to kind of drive by now and see things that are happening there. Another, I think, wonderful thing about our Police Department is that they've already completed Tier One of their accreditation, which is six months ahead of schedule. Again, I think that the Police Department's working very hard. They hired a new dispatcher who has lots of experience. And I guess they're going to bring that person to the commission soon to meet. Furniture bids and recommendations to the Permanent Project Billing Committee were made, as well as approving bids for dispatch furniture. And the last thing was the ARPA request, which we're going to discuss tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Fire Commission?
No updates.
All right, Planning and Zoning.
Next meeting, I believe, is Thursday.
Okay. Finance Subcommittee. We did not meet this month. Normally, we meet the second Tuesday, which would have been tonight. And because of the election, we did not meet this month. Next one is Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
The radio system will be up and running, hopefully with the testing by the middle of December. I keep saying that every month, but hopefully it's going to happen in the middle of December. And right now, what's happening at each site are the cabinets are being put in.
Okay, great. Next one is CIWWA.
That meeting is tomorrow night.
All right. And the last one is Blueprint Committee.
I don't have an update on that. I was, I did not.
I can give an update on that. Because I was at the last one. So Blueprint Committee met, I don't have the exact date, but met on a Wednesday about three weeks ago. And we went over some existing plans and studies that have been, the town has gone through, had decided that they're going to focus on one through Yale. And they're going to reach out to the deputy, I'm sorry, Assistant Town Manager Rory, and going to reach out to Yale, hopefully reach out to Yale to see if they can get some students to help us update that and the professor that's still there to see if there's any, you know, further recommendations they might want to make. That's something that may have been talked about yet, Rory, but we will talk about. And they're excited to continue the process moving forward. There's some great stuff in that study, so I ask that every member of this committee get that study so we can read through it and get better acquainted with it. It's a nice plan that's moving forward.
Okay, great. So just so everyone on the council knows, I will be sending a list of the current committees and who is liaison to them and the two committees that we appoint to. One is Pension, which we have appointments tonight. I've already checked with those people. And the Blueprint Committee. And I will send that out before our next meeting, which is December 5th, so you can review it if anyone would like to change committees. If you want to stay where you are, that's fine. You want to add one, just email and we can discuss it at our next meeting. Okay, next item is.
For Park and Rec. You didn't mention Thursday for having the Thanksgiving dinner or Thanksgiving luncheon. It starts at 12:00.
Yeah, this was, because this was the September report from the Park and Rec meeting, but thank you for that. I was not aware that it was this week. I did not. It's this Thursday? Okay, great. Thank you. Town Managers Report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Town Council. First, elections, as you're all perfectly aware. We had a municipal election last week for members of the Town Council and Board of Education. And my congratulations go to all council members and Board of Education members who were elected last week. These are all unpaid volunteer positions, and I know firsthand the amount of time that all of you volunteer and how hard all of you work to make this town the best it can be. So thanks to all of you. I also want to thank our Town Clerk Lisa Valenti, our Registrar's Lisa Fitch, and Marlene Esposito, and our Moderator Paul Atheart, and all our election workers and volunteers, particularly as we did have a recount for Board of Education this year, which required a lot of extra hours this past Sunday to complete. There is a lot that goes in behind the scenes to make our elections clean, accurate, and efficient. I want to acknowledge those individuals for the great work they have done and always do. You will recall that at the last meeting of the council, October 17th, you passed a resolution urging the legislature and the governor to take action on a number of criminal justice items. As directed by the council, this resolution was transmitted that week by a certified letter to the governor, members of our legislative delegation, and state House and Senate leadership. As you know, our State Representative Vincent Candelora is in full support of this measure. And I received communication from our State Senator Paul Cicarella and Christine Cohen, which are included in your folders this evening, which both essentially indicate their desire to work alongside us in the coming session to address the growing problem of property crime and criminal justice. To date, I've received no response from any of the House and Senate legislative leaders or the governor. As you know, Channel 3 and Channel 8 picked up this news story, and the governor did respond to them in a statement from a staff member saying he has taken, he has taken action as, quote, "strengthening juvenile justice laws in 2022 and passing landmark gun safety legislation in 2023." The conversation as to how to make Connecticut even safer should continue every year, and the governor looks forward to engaging in the coming legislative session on how to make that happen, end quote. I've communicated with numerous leaders in our surrounding communities, asking that they consider taking up a similar resolution. And I'm renewing and expanding those efforts now that the municipal elections are over in these communities. I'm proud to report that we successfully encouraged the town of Stratford to pass such a resolution based on ours. Their town council passed this resolution last night, and I hope they are the first of many to bring attention to this at the legislature that it deserves. Last Thursday, Mayor Angeloni and I had the pleasure to attend the annual Veterans Day Lunch, put on by the senior center at Stanley T. Williams. At this event, care kits were packaged to be mailed to our local Connecticut National Guard Service members who are currently serving overseas. And our own resident veteran Cliff Potter put on a presentation on the Veterans Anglers Charters Program that you may have heard him speak about here. Mayor Angeloni and I are also certain to promote the new Veteran Service Commission and ask them to consider serving. As always, thanks go to our staff and volunteers who put on a terrific lunch for our honored local veterans. On Friday morning, Mayor Angeloni and I also attended a terrific Veterans Day Assembly put on by Jerome Harrison School and honored our local veterans with presentations and music from the teachers and staff, including a breakfast for local veterans before the event. Speaking of the Veteran Service Commission, since the council passed the creating ordinance of this new commission, we've promoted it in local news outlets such as the Times and the Sound Newspapers, our Facebook outlets and web page soliciting volunteers to serve on it. We also just sent out roughly 530 letters to veterans in town listed with the Assessor's Office telling them about the new commission and asking them to consider applying to serve. We will soon be transmitting to the council information on applicants, so you can begin to decide on your appointments for this commission. E-Waste Collection Event. On November 4th, we had a very successful e-waste collection event held at Public Works Headquarters, a collaboration between our Solid Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee, Public Works, and Take-Two Electronics Recycling. Over 200 cars pulled through the event that day to drop off discarded electronics. It is also reported received over three dozen mattresses. Thanks to the Hazardous Waste Committee, our Public Works team, and Take-Two for working to make that an effective and successful collection. North Branford's Office of Social Services is once again conducting a Thanksgiving basket share on Monday, November 20th, matching donors and recipients to provide some assistance for those who need help with providing a Thanksgiving dinner. The deadline for donors and recipients to register was October 31st, and this year we are assisting 70 families in need, working in conjunction with the Food Bank to ensure unduplicated continuity of service. We're also conducting a holiday basket share for food and gifts, and this is also done in conjunction with Roots for Relief, donating bicycles to children in need. So far, we have 26 children receiving bicycles through the program. For those looking to be a recipient or a donor in the Christmas holiday basket share, there is still time. The deadline to register is this Friday, November 17th. Just call our Office of Social Services at 203-484-6006, or email ssadn@northbranfordct.gov. Kim Dawson and Shoreline Pixels are once again spearheading a holiday photo exchange, which is benefiting both the North Branford Food Pantry and North Branford Police Department Toy Drive this year. The event is at Town Hall in front of the Tractor on Saturday, December 2nd, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You'll receive a professional photo with Santa in exchange for a donation to the Food Pantry or the Toy Drive. As Counselor Palladino mentioned, we have a couple of upcoming business ribbon cutting events. An Assistant Town Manager Rory Burke is coordinating these. We have the Cafe, Central Cafe ribbon cutting on Thursday at 4:00. And we also have the Dunkin' Donuts in Northford following their full remodel on November 30th at 11:00 AM. We invite all members of the Town Council to attend these events, and we have more that will be announced soon. The Town's annual holiday tree lighting event will take place this year on Friday, December 1st, 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM at Totaka Valley Park. The event is put on by our Park and Recreation Department in conjunction with North Branford Rotary, with support from our Public Works Department and Police Department. This year, we'll have ice sculpting, marshmallow toasting, hay rides, musical entertainment, food trucks, hot chocolate and cookies, a petting zoo, and Santa. You can also mail a letter to Santa or Mrs. Claus or your favorite elf or reindeer. And we've also moved the sculptor away from the portalits this year, so we'll be happy about that. And now this year, we'll have a handmade artisans market where you can shop local artisans and crafters at this year's tree lighting. There will be free shuttle transportation from NBIS, and it will run from 5:45 to 6:30 PM and 8:00 to 8:45 PM. As this is our last meeting before the Thanksgiving holiday, I want to take this opportunity to wish you all and all our town residents a happy Thanksgiving. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mike, can you, I apologize. Can you just say the time for the tree lighting again?
Sure. Tree lighting is taking place 6:30 to 8:30.
Thank you.
You got it.
So the shuttles will run 5:45 to 6:30?
Correct.
And then?
And then 8:00 to 8:45.
Okay, so if someone wanted to leave earlier that was on the shuttle, the earliest they can leave is 8:00?
Sounds like they're stranded. I don't know.
I would check into that, please. I think shuttles is a great idea, but I think we need to have them a little bit more available.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do about modifying that.
Okay, thank you. Only from working the Poco Fest and shuttles?
Yeah, we want to have people walking down the streets.
Yeah. So I would look into that. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Permit Project Building Committee?
Sure. The Police Department EOC project, the exterior framing continues and roofing remains underway. The exterior walls are in process and facade work is underway, and they are continuing to make the building watertight. The North Branford Police Department has posted some photos on Facebook of the interior of the facility as it's shaping up, and they are shared on my page as well for those interested in taking a look. North Branford High School, the work on the punch list is continuing. Steel erection has been completed in the Phase 2 area, and masonry is beginning. The basement backfill has been completed, and underground plumbing and electrical connections completed. For NBIS, again, the brick repointing is continuing, and as I've reported before, only quiet work is being done while school is in session. That concludes my report on PPBC.
Okay, and COVID updates?
There's a little new to report on the COVID front with, or with flu and RSV. The council has in your folders tonight the latest EPI report, FP report from East Shore District Health Department. CDC is anticipating similar number of hospitalizations this year as last year nationally, but more than pre-pandemic years. Yet we're starting from a lower hospitalization rate this season compared to last across all three major respiratory viruses. There are currently low statewide case rates for flu and RSV. East Shore District Health continues to hold COVID and flu clinics and COVID clinics throughout the fall, including ones at their location at 688 East Main Street from 2:00 to 5:00 on November 15th and November 21st. These are by appointment, and details can be found at their website, esdhd.org. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Community events and presentations. Seeing none, we will move on to citizen's statements, petitions, and correspondence. Any citizens? None? Okay. Moving on to resignations and appointments. First one is appointment of Barry Ponder from Planning and Zoning to the Blueprint Committee as an alternate.
Motion.
Motion by Counselor Palladino, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. The next is appointment of Will Delacamera from the Board of Fire Commission to the Pension Committee as an alternate, term to expire 12/31/23.
Motion.
Motion by Deputy Mayor McMillan, a second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries nine nothing. Next one is appointment of Mayor Rosie Angeloni to the Pension Committee as a regular member, term to expire 12/1/25.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Goad. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. I abstain. Motion carries eight zero one abstention. Next is appointment of Deputy Mayor Jeff McMillan to the Pension Committee as a regular member, term to expire 12/1/25.
Motion.
Motion by Counselor Palladino, seconded by Counselor Goad. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, favor.
Opposed.
Opposed? Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries eight zero one abstention. Okay. The next item is unfinished business, nothing to read on our agenda here, so we will continue on with new business discussion and action. The first is the COPS grant for Police Department in $500,000.
We have to go through, we have to go through executive session to talk about that.
Not the COPS grant?
Oh, not COPS. No, you're right. My bad. Second one, B. Hi. Motion for COPS grant for Police Department, $500,000.
Second. Okay, discussion?
We talked about this a long time ago. It was brought up to this, this was for the, for the police officers to be hired.
The work that Jimmy did to.
Yes, new, new police officers. Yep.
Reviewing, making sure.
It's an unbelievable gift.
Yes, it is. I just want to put it out there that we discussed it.
Yes, and I would like to thank Deputy Chief Lovelace, because I know he was very instrumental in pursuing this grant, writing the grant, and submitting it. And we were very fortunate to receive $500,000. Jimmy, do you want to just say a little bit about it as far as like how many officers this is in the structure of the grant?
Sure. So the, the grant is a nationwide grant, it's a competitive grant, it's a matching grant. There was an over 40% failure rate, I would call it, rejection rate for those. And there's only two departments in the entire state of Connecticut that are receiving the grant. One is Hartford and the second is North Branford. The grant is based on, and I apologize for the, I've been at a lot of meetings lately, so I got a lifesaver in. The grant is based on population, and for our population, the max officers we could apply for was for four officers, so that's what I applied for the grant for. It's 125,000 per an officer total over a three-year period. The grant is open for five years, and then you can have an extension period. So it gives you time to hire, recruit, and evaluate, and then, and then proceed forward. So we're going to be able to use this for the, the two new officers that the council had already approved for in last budget cycle, which will start in the academy January 5th. And then we can go forward with the plan of working with the council to, to finish off the rest of the grant, so.
Are these, do these have to be new officers going into the academy, or can they be lateral moves?
They have to be new to the town in North Branford. So we can't lay somebody off and then hire them back on, on the grant. That would be a violation of federal law. So they have to be new to the town in North Branford.
Did I just hear that we had 75 applicants?
We did.
For the positions?
Yes, yeah.
That's awesome.
So, and in comparison, there's an agency that we used to use years ago, South Central, they do the shoreline here. Six towns were hiring, and they had a total of 26 applicants, so we were ecstatic with.
The six towns total had 26?
Yeah.
Wow.
If you want to come to North Branford?
If someone were to retire and you had to rehire, hire a new, new police officer with that?
They would have to retire from another agency, not North Branford. So you couldn't, you couldn't retire from North Branford and then be hired under the grant for this.
No, no. If, if a police officer retired, you couldn't hire a new police officer in that, for that position?
With the COPS grant?
With the COPS grant. I think he's saying if somebody retired.
Yeah, no, I'm following you. I'm just, I'm just going back through my head right now that goes to the grant, so I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak. It would, the way the grant is set up is, it is for new positions, yeah. It's not to backfill older positions. That's my, I can, I can print you out the rules for it, but that's my, my understanding. I just want to be careful of how I answer that, yeah. So it's to add to your, to your force, it's not to supplement from, from other retirement.
Great. Well, North Branford is very lucky to have received this grant, considering we were one of two towns in the state to receive it. So thank you for all of your work, and we're very lucky. And, you know, as we all know, so the two going into, the two new officers that will be starting the academy in January, it will take some time before they're on the road. It's roughly 10 to 12 months, just due to the academy and then training and ride around. But you have to start somewhere. And so it's a start, and they should be on the street, hopefully by the end of '24. So that's good. So we had a motion, correct, by Deputy?
Yep. Remind me, I believe there was a second button?
No, Marie did, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries nine nothing. Okay. The next item agenda is ARPA funding. We're going to just skip over this one right now because this is for discussion in executive session, and when we come out of executive session, we'll decide if we're voting on this tonight or not. And the next item is approval of tax refunds. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Any discussion?
I'm not getting one, so.
You're not getting one? Not this time? Sorry about that.
Full disclosure, my, my mother-in-law is getting $15.64 back. I have support for you to know that.
We'll note that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries nine nothing. Okay. Citizen's statements and petitions? Okay. Seeing none, we will go into executive session to discuss matters of security strategy and deployment of devices affecting public security. And it will include the town manager, the town attorney, Chair of the Police Commission, Deputy Chief Lovelace. And do we need?
Assistant Town Manager, perhaps?
Assistant Town Manager and?
The Finance Director.
And Finance Director, okay. And Finance Director.
Motion.
Second.
Let it run.
Okay. Motion by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Diamond. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay, we will go into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, and we will be in executive session for. What?